...council for the sixteenth of March. And if I can get a call called Suzanne.
Mayor Levy is absent this evening. Mayor Protem Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Soynier.
Here.
Councilmember Sawyer.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Join me now in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you're wondering, the mayor is at an Elton John concert for those youngsters in the audience. If you don't know who Elton John is, it was worth visiting a council member. First on the agenda tonight is an appointment to the Utilities Advisory Committee, and we have an applicant, Patricia Stinner. Patricia, I am so glad that you applied. Get you actively involved here, although you have been a very good supporter of the council thus far. So Suzanne, I'm going to turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I wanted to let everybody know that Mrs. Stinner is applying for the permanent position on the UAC. There's actually, there's three openings. One's a permanent, two are alternate. So she's applying for the permanent position, and there'll still be two openings for anyone in the audience or in the public that's interested. I'm talking for Kip because he's got learning dys... That's interested in being on that committee.
Okay, thank you.
And you have her application in front of you, and like you said, she's here in the audience to answer any questions.
Patricia, do you want to come up and talk about why you would like to take this on? Just give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is Patricia Stinner. I live at eleven forty Michael Lane in Woodland Park. I applied for this position. I was kind of, received some guidance from some people or where some of my past skills might be of use to the city, and I always liked to serve where I live. I do have a background in economics. I have some background in water issues. I was the proud owner of not one but two residences in dry districts in Colorado. So I've been through some things. I also was involved in a minor way with a small project called Windy Gap. You might have heard of that one in Colorado. I came in as feasibility and an analyst on some of the numbers for the properties that had to be taken for that project. So are there any other questions I can answer for anybody in council?
What was the name of that project?
The Windy Gap project.
Windy Gap.
In northern Colorado. It's a northern Colorado Water Conservancy district.
And so you've had some experience also in the affordable housing arena?
I have. That takes me years and years back to the Pena administration in Denver, Colorado. I was an appointee on that committee for the affordable housing in Denver, Colorado. It was one of the first committees commissioned by the mayor. I was one of the appointees.
Okay, good. You have a lot of appropriate experience.
I hope so. I hope I have something to offer.
Good.
Paul?
I was there at the meeting. Patricia is very qualified, I believe, in evaluating what's going on with water and the quarter. I will agree to you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something. Thank you for volunteering. I was at the Main Street meeting, and I learned a new phrase called STP, same ten people. And so now we can say the same eleven people. So thank you for volunteering, because I do see a lot of people volunteering for the same committee, so it's great to have someone new come on board.
It's my pleasure, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept Ms. Stinner's.
So move.
Second. Suzanne?
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Soynier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero. If you will stay right there, I'd love to give you your oath of office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kip, you can just nod your head in gratitude.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda tonight are additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. And for the consent calendar, I think Suzanne was going to add the report of expenditures.
Yes, ma'am. We council received in your packets the expenditures for the month of February, so we would like to add those on to the consent calendar and have them approved as well as the minutes of the March second meeting.
So acknowledged. So on the consent calendar, which is item number four, we will have not only the minutes but also the expenditures statement. Are there any comments or concerns about those two items?
Move to approve minutes and expenditures on the consent calendar, second.
Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Soynier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, moving right along. Item number five, unfinished business. We have none, so we'll move on to six. Six is to consider ordinance number thirteen hundred on initial posting, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Carrina. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Harvey. Thank you, members of council, members of staff, and members of the audience. Thank you for coming here tonight. Tonight, my presentation will be on ordinance number thirteen hundred, series twenty seventeen. Tonight is the first reading for this ordinance. It was attached in your packets. As first reading, please keep in mind that this is not a public hearing, and I am making a brief presentation tonight, hopefully to clarify it, because this ordinance does go all over the municipal code. So it's hard to read when you get it on paper, like you did in your packet. And so tonight, I'm just going to briefly go over it, the purpose and intent of this regulatory change. But remember that tonight, we are looking for staff's recommendation is that the ordinance thirteen hundred, series twenty seventeen, be accepted on first reading, and that the public hearing before council be scheduled for April sixth, twenty seventeen. The planning commission did review and had numerous work sessions on this ordinance, these regulatory changes. They did review it in public hearing on February twenty third, twenty seventeen, and their recommendation was attached to the staff report. In essence, the planning commission recommends that council approve the code amendments as proposed in the ordinance that was submitted with your packet. So having said that, I'm just going to spend maybe five minutes and go through a brief PowerPoint presentation, talk about some of these, the essence of these regulatory changes, and answer any clarification questions that you might have. So this is ordinance number thirteen hundred, series twenty seventeen. It is first reading for city council, and it addresses the accessory buildings and setbacks as we deal with them in the municipal code and as we deal with them as a land use issue here in the city. So in essence, this proposed code amendment allows for attached, detached, excuse me, detached accessory buildings in non-residential zones, in the public zone district, in the neighborhood commercial, community commercial, and other commercial zone districts, where in the matrix, there is no permitted use for accessory buildings currently as the matrix is written. So this would allow, as a permitted, outright permitted use, accessory buildings. It would also change it from a conditional use permit for an accessory building in the industrial zone to a permitted use. So that is the substantive change that this regulation deals with and addresses. It takes a lot of the setbacks that were applied to accessory buildings and moves them into the different zone districts. So that's why you're seeing a lot of changes throughout the different zone districts. And then we did, because we're looking at setbacks, and this code is so old, it's been around since nineteen sixty-nine, which is a good thing. It's so old that there's been some terminology confusion between what a setback is and what a yard is. And so when we're dealing with setbacks for accessory buildings, we had to look at all of that confusing terminology with the purpose of clarifying it. So that's what you're seeing a lot of, too, where we're striking out the word yard, because that's not really what we mean. We mean a setback, which is a distance prescribed either between buildings or between a lot line and a building. So a lot of the changes dealt with that. And then we did a few municipal, housekeeping changes to the municipal code, dealing with accessory buildings, and I'll get into some of those briefly. These are a couple of images, and the next slide shows a few more of what we mean when we say accessory buildings. These images were taken all in the CBD zone district, which is Main Street, which is downtown City of Woodland Park. This is an accessory building that currently exists. This is an example of an accessory building that harmonizes quite well with the existing business building. And this is what we're looking at when we talk about accessory buildings that are detached from the principal use. And here is a shed at the back of this. You'll recognize a lot of these businesses. Again, they were examples from the CBD zone, but accessory buildings throughout all commercial zones is what our goal is with these regulatory changes.
Which building is the top one?
This one here is Dana's Dance Studio. This is behind off of Antler Alley, just off of Antler Alley and Quinn Alley. That's what I was thinking of. So this is the backyard of Dana's Dance. This is the Hackman House. All right, so this is the essence of the change right here. It's in our use matrix, and these columns were all blank, except for the industrial zone district, which was, had a C in it. Well, if it's blank, it means that it's not a permitted use. It means that accessory uses and structures are not permitted in these zone districts, which is the commercial zone districts essentially. You can see its P is permitted in all of the residential zone districts, even the higher density residential zone districts, but for some reason, it was blank in these zone districts. And we find that there is a very definite need for accessory buildings in commercial zone districts, for storage primarily. That's what a lot of these little sheds in the back are used for, is to store their cleaning supplies or their cleaning equipment, or even to store some of their inventory. They're not big structures, but that's what we're seeing. We're seeing a need for these. And so staff has worked to try to remedy this need and allow for, as a permitted outright use, accessory buildings. Then what you're seeing in the matrix is not only is the use identified, but then you've got all these standards in here, which, this is the inappropriate section of the municipal code to start putting standards. Each of these standards relating to how far it has to be and what the conditions that are applicable to accessory buildings are. All of these standards should be in the actual zone district. So within the community commercial or the central business district zone, for instance, each of these standards should be in there, not in this section. And what I find with this code is, it's a great code, but there are redundancies and repetitions and inappropriate sections and chapters and titles, and this kind of cleaned it up. So what we did was, we took a lot of these standards, and we simply moved them over. So that's really a housekeeping issue. We didn't change any standards. The only thing we introduced was allowing for these accessory buildings and structures to be a permitted use in the commercial zone districts. And then we changed it from a conditional use permit to a permitted, outright permitted use. That is the essence of all of the changes in the nine pages that were submitted to you. Now, the current definition of an accessory use, and I'm just going to read it to you, "It's a user structure naturally and normally incidental to, subordinate to, and devoted exclusively to the main use of the land or buildings. Accessory buildings shall not be larger than the main or principal building; otherwise, they shall be considered a main or principal building." So this is the current regulation that exists in terms of a definition. We didn't change any of that. All we did was, we added some sentences. A lot of the language that you see in these, in red, came from what you just saw as all crossed out, or other sections of the code. So this is not new, what you see in red, but now it's in the appropriate section. And essentially, we added a couple of sentences, and it was that "No accessory building shall be constructed upon a lot until construction of the principal building has commenced." So you can't build your shed before you build your office building. And "No accessory building shall be placed in a front yard." That's a current regulation that exists right now.
So for construction, they have temporary sheds, that's okay?
Construction trailers? Yeah, that's okay. All right. So this was another section of the municipal code that dealt with lot area, and it's kind of buried, and in here are a whole bunch of standards that deal with accessory buildings. So for staff to answer an inquiry, we had to find this section. We have to read through it and then relate it to what the question is. It's very obscure. It's hard to find. Many people that are trying to just put up a shed in their backyard, this is residential and commercial, although commercial wouldn't, you wouldn't even apply these, because right now they're not allowed. In the residential zone, they'd have, there's no way any layperson could find this regulation. So it's in the wrong place. And what I did was simply cross this out and moved it all to the applicable section. And in this case, it would be residential sections or and commercial sections. So the new code uses existing regulations. And a lot of these existing regulations required a four-foot setback, four-foot setback from the property line or from another building, those types of regulations. So that is the primary change. This is where we get into the terminology. What is the difference between a setback and a yard? I know that you guys are all excited to know what that difference is. This is what I've spent the last six months working here in the city doing, but a yard is measured from a property line to a building. So this is the front yard, and that's shown here. This is the side yard, from the property line to the building, and this is the rear yard, from the property line to the building. A setback is a prescribed distance parallel to a lot line. So this is the side setback right here. Let's say that's eight feet or four feet or whatever it is. That is the section that must remain clear and unobstructed. It's the buffer between neighbors, if you want to call that, or the buffer between buildings, adjacent buildings, between commercial properties. It's the buffer next to you, for your neighbor, really, is what it is. And what this municipal code did, because in nineteen sixty-nine, it was written with the term yard, and yard has, over time, become interchangeable with the word setback. And they're not. They're not interchangeable. They're close, but they're not. So they would, the municipal code relates, would say, "A required yard is twenty-five feet in the front." Well, what that means is, it's a twenty-five foot setback. Sometimes it'll say things like accessory buildings aren't required in the front yard. Well, that's not a setback, that's the yard. So what we did was, we went through the entire municipal code, and every time the word yard came up, we assessed it to determine whether or not it meant setback or yard. And that's why you're seeing a lot of the word yard crossed out and replaced with the term setback. Those are a lot of what we would call housekeeping changes that relate to just the implementation of setbacks in a land use code. So this graphic was just to illustrate what the term difference is. It was not included in your packet, but I can, if this council wants, I can send it to you, if it helps. Also, if council feels that you want to workshop on these regulations, if I'm just confusing you more, let me know, and we can certainly have a brief workshop before the next public hearing or at any time. All right, so generally proposed, the changes will add accessory buildings complete with setbacks in non-residential zones, that's the commercial zones. It also clarifies accessory setbacks in residential zones. It puts it in the residential zone district so that it's not in different disparate parts of the municipal code, and it clarifies the terminology between setbacks and yards throughout the municipal code. The benefits of this regulatory change, in essence, adding permitted uses for accessory buildings, it addresses a need. We have inquiries on the phone and businesses that come into our office saying, "I need to put a shed in my backyard. My building's not big enough, and I don't want to add on to it, just for, you know, a hundred square feet or something." It applies existing standards. We're not creating a lot of new standards. We're not requiring owner standards. We're allowing and facilitating a use that's necessary and making it easier for businesses to suit their needs. We're also simplifying and clarifying the regulation throughout, and we're allowing for accessory buildings extra storage space in non-residential zones. This follows historic development patterns that we already see in the city. We're already seeing these accessory buildings there. In nineteen sixty-nine, when this code was originally written, accessory buildings and structures were allowed. And so some of these, probably not the images you saw, but some of these date back a long time. The one potential disadvantage is clutter, and the planning commission discussed this disadvantage at some length. We had over three to four workshops with the planning commission, and with clutter, they decided that they wanted to limit the number of accessory buildings to, two in number, so that there is a limit to how much clutter could be potentially created. And then any, any structure that gets built has to harmonize. Zoning development permit would be required, and we would want to make sure that, as you saw in some of those images, that it at least looks good. So we have tried to control the clutter that could potentially arise from this. So again, tonight, for first reading and acceptance of this ordinance, and we are requesting that the public hearing be held on April sixth. That concludes my presentation. I am open to answering questions.
Well, first question for council is, are there a requirement for any of you to do a workshop on this issue? I think Laura's presentation is pretty darn good.
Look, I think you addressed it. I think the key thing was what you addressed right at the end, to make sure it's in harmony with the existing building, make it better for mechanism, and ensure that that occurs. It sounds like it is, and that's good. And then I just wanted to ask a quick question. In all the public meetings you had with planning commission, were there any major objections?
We only had one actual public meeting, although all the meetings are public and anyone can come to the workshops. During the public hearing, there was some objection from a planning commissioner and members of the public. Those minutes will be sent to you as soon as we have them finished and signed. The objection was that not everyone can take advantage of this regulation, and that's true, because some lots just don't have space to put any additional buildings on them. So this isn't going to be available to everybody. Sometimes the best solution is a design solution. But we don't want to get too much into that. Those minutes will be sent to you for the public hearing.
Thank you for the presentation. So I'm looking at, I almost feel like we should have two ordinances here, one for the accessory buildings and the other for redefining the yard and the setback. Am I off base there?
No, the two issues are related, because this whole ordinance deals with setbacks, accessory buildings, and how we apply setbacks to accessory.
Are we changing other ordinances with the same terminology?
We're changing different sections of the municipal code, different chapters, and even different titles, like the Mobile Home Park chapter.
So shouldn't that be a separate ordinance?
No, because it's all related to one issue, and that is accessory buildings and setbacks.
And the city attorney has looked at this, and she concurs that this is a single-topic ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
What about existing buildings that don't fit the criteria of what you're talking about?
We will, again, this is a good question for the public hearing, but we're, this doesn't deal with retroactivity.
And it doesn't deal with riding stables?
Riding stables are accessory structures, and it does, what it does is, it puts back what should have already been codified. For some reason, those standards that you see going in here should have already, they shouldn't have been removed. For some reason, they just are not in there. But we have a reference to standards for riding stables, and you flip through the whole municipal code, and you can't find these standards. Those are the standards that should be codified. That, again, is a housekeeping issue. I don't know why it's not in the print version, why it's not in the codified version, but it should be.
But we're a western town. I mean, you're going, you reach it back forty-nine years now.
Well, we continue to get inquiries about horses and stables in the city, and then we read in the section that says, "Nonconforming stables must meet these standards," and then you flip through the entire code, and there's no standards. Those are the standards that should be in the code. And so this is dealing with accessory structures, which are riding stables, and it's just a housekeeping issue, really.
Are there any more administrative questions for this initial port posting? Then you have no more questions for Laura. I want to set the motion on initial posting.
I approve of ordinance thirteen hundred on initial posting, to the public hearing on April sixth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
Suzanne?
Matthews?
Yes.
Soynier?
Yeah.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Laura. Next is number seven on the agenda, public hearings. And before we begin the public hearing on ordinance number thirteen oh three, I must enter into the record. Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is a common practice of the city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during those public hearings. So Sally?
Good evening, Mayor Protem Harvey, council members. Ordinance thirteen oh three is proposed to extend a two-year extension for Big O Tires with their conditional use permit and site plan review that was done two years ago. And the approval was for the construction of five additional auto repair bays within a three thousand square foot detached building in a community commercial zone. And two years ago, when this was reviewed to add five bays to Big O Tires, it was reviewed under the community commercial criteria, the use regulations and performance standards, as well as the site plan review standards, and the eleven criteria for conditional uses. So site plan, just for your reference, this is Big O Tires at five 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 Chester Avenue that currently operates today. And I'd like to introduce to you Jeff Sadler, who is here in the audience, if you have any questions. Scott Coldenhoven was unable to be here this evening, the owner. But two years ago, Scott was proposing to build this approximately three thousand square foot detached building that would include storage and five bays. So this is what was approved two years ago, and Scott has evaluated his business operations and wasn't able to go under construction within the past two years. So is asking for this extension. Wanted to show you also that the architecture for the building is going to complement the existing building and fit on this site very nicely. So our findings is that this is a reasonable request. Since the standards were met a couple years ago, there is a demonstrated need, and the mitigation of potential impacts have been taken, have been addressed with traffic study, noise, good design, and the owner is adjusting his business and investment priorities. So with that, staff recommends approval of ordinance thirteen oh three to authorize this two-year extension of the conditional use with the site plan that approved the construction of five additional auto repair bays within the detached building and with the three original conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Jeff is also here to answer any questions, if you'd like.
So this was originally seen by me when I was on the BOA chair, and so I'm very familiar with this. I didn't see any problem with it then. I don't see any problem with it now. So I've seen this for years, myself.
Any other questions for Sally? Any questions for the applicant? I have one question, if you could come, yeah, it's probably easier for you to come up here, if you could go ahead and give us your name. And this is And this is not a condition for our approval or disapproval. I just remember the discussion that there would be no water in these accessory buildings or in these new bays.
That I'm not sure of. That's Scott's deal.
Yeah, and Jeff, if you could go ahead and give us your name and your.
Oh, Jeff Sadler, I'm the store manager for Big O Tires.
All right.
But as far as the water goes, I don't know that detail of it.
Nope. So.
That's correct. They don't intend on putting a restroom in this building. With it being in close proximity to the other bays, they felt that they could handle that need with the existing building.
I think the concern before was, you know, for industrial accidents, having access to water for flushing things out.
Again, it's proximity to the main building. They'll be able to have the appropriate equipment to handle that, and it will meet the fire standards. So there should be no problem with the lack of water.
Well, just a curious question, I guess. Do you think, or is it, is it your plan or business plan to do it in the next two years?
Yes. Originally, when I took over about a year and a half ago, we kind of streamlined the procedure a lot better. Cleaned out the place a lot, and it's been going better with the increase in productivity in business that we've been having. It is very much on the horizon for us to be doing that, just to better accommodate customers and stuff like that, get people out of there faster is the big thing.
Good.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Jeff? Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Um, this is open for public comment. Are there any questions or comments from those of you in the audience? Seeing none, and no further questions from council, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution number, excuse me, ordinance number thirteen oh three.
Motion to approve ordinance thirteen oh three as stated. Second.
With the conditions as recommended by the planning.
I didn't know we had any extra conditions.
The ordinance does integrate the original conditions that were part of the conditional use two years ago.
Okay.
Copy. Thanks. And there was a second?
Yes.
Yes. Suzanne?
Swenier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Next on the agenda, public comment for items that are not on the agenda.
New business.
Number eight, new business. Sorry, that's an important one. Um, Resolution eighty. Kip, are you going to be able to do this?
I'm, uh, I'm gonna try to get through it. So please bear with me here. Voice is going out a little bit. Resolution eight fifteen is establishing a five percent increase in water and wastewater tap fees effective April first, two thousand seventeen. The municipal code requires an annual review of the water tap management plan, and that's before you tonight. It's the Water Tap Management Plan Reconciliation. Thank you. Um, this reconciliation covers all audited numbers as well as looking into the future and projected capital expenses, as well as the debt service. I'm gonna first start out with the the large spreadsheet that's put on your, on the dais in front of you. Excuse me. Everything above the dash line is actual numbers. Those are audited numbers. So what you're seeing there is truly the numbers that we spent and the revenues that were taken in. Everything below the dash line is projections, everything from tap sales to commodity revenue to capital expenses and the debt associated with those expenses. First, I'd like to point your attention to the orange highlighted. Uh, we have in here eighteen single-family taps for two thousand and seventeen. Uh, we had budgeted fourteen, and we've sold four year-to-date. We feel that we will continue, so we upped the number a little bit compared to our budget numbers to better reflect actual numbers. Moving to the right, you see the highlighted blue cell. This cell is what an actual tap, average tap fee was for two thousand and sixteen, eight thousand one hundred and ninety-five. That's due largely to the fact that we sold twenty-four multifamily units, the Valley View Apartments. If you were to look directly above those cells, you would see in two years, two out of the three years before that, the average tap fee was a lot less there. That was due to trail ridge. Uh, moving over to the right, column H is the total commodity revenue. I'd just like to point out here, this is metered water sales and how our revenue has been very constant, even with new growth. I contribute low-flow fixtures to less water being used, less revenue, or consistent revenue coming in. Um, in the in the highlighted green cell, I want to point that to your attention. That is the capital replacement fee on the water bill. Uh, I want to point that to your attention because we changed that as of the last council meeting. That now will be attached to the annual adjustment where it hadn't been since nineteen ninety-seven. So it's been three dollars and twenty-five cents per customer per month since nineteen ninety-seven. That has changed now. Then everything below that cell does increase at a two percent rate. That's basically the the increase, the average increase factor there. Moving to your right in the red highlighted cell, you'll see a one point one million dollar capital expense that is due to the reservoir that we're looking at constructing and also the state requirements for the water treatment plant that are being initiated. And that's a six hundred thousand dollar price tag on that. So yeah, those two together, you get the one point one. Moving further over to your right, excuse me, in column Q, that is our fund balance at the end of the year. You can see here that we're very healthy in two thousand and sixteen, where we're at two point five million dollars as a unrestricted fund balance, where we hadn't been in previous years, so we're doing very healthy. And we would like to continue that and have those capital expenses in the attached spreadsheets that I'll go over, go over with just shortly. So we continue to stay healthy, but we also have a five percent increase in tap fees moving forward from two thousand and seventeen all the way through twenty thirty-five. So if I could point your attention to the other two spreadsheets. The first one being the the two thousand and sixteen capital expenditure schedule. Again, everything above the dash line is actual numbers. Everything below is projected. Uh, we spent three hundred, three hundred fifty-one thousand in two thousand and sixteen, and here you see that's because of the large capital projects. Uh, moving into the future, we have the reservoir, we have the estate requirements or the the dove requirements on there, as well as a auto meter read upgrade, looking at replacing meters for our customers. That is one of the wishes of the Utilities Committee to replace those. Ken's laughing at me because when he was on there, that was a priority. We had moved that up one year. That was slated for twenty twenty. We moved that to twenty nineteen just where, because our fund balance is where it is. Moving to the next spreadsheet, the debt service spreadsheet, you'll see everything above the dash line is actual numbers in two thousand and fifteen. Uh, we paid off a significant amount of debt. About eighty-five percent of our debt service was paid off in two thousand and fifteen, so we're in a great financial position to start those large capital projects, meaning the reservoir, and acquire new debt. Also in here is the financing for the metering system, as well as additional conveyance in the home state pipeline. And these two spreadsheets filter into the larger spreadsheet in column M and N. This was presented to the Utilities Advisory Committee with their recommendation of the five percent increase to council. That's before you tonight. I recommend approval of ordinance eight fifteen, adjusting water and wastewater tap fees five percent effective April first, two thousand and seventeen. Any questions?
Mayor Protem, if perhaps John and Paul were very involved in this from the Utilities Advisory Committee perspective, maybe before we take questions, see if they have some comments or things that might help the council and the public understand the process.
John?
Well, we have invested several hours in this now famous reconciliation spreadsheet that Kip authors. A lot of discussion. It's always sensitive when we talk about increasing rates for water treatment or fresh drinking water. Lot of discussion about that. We all pay for water. And in terms of raising those rates and looking at the history that has been followed in approving rates, we came to the conclusion that this financial reconciliation makes sense. And I, as an individual, I think we ought to approve it.
Paul?
This is how it goes. We we need our water. It's very important as we grow as a city, we need to be ready to be good neighbors to our neighbors in dry years. We go through these periods where you have water, snowfalls, and drought periods. We have been very prudent by looking to the future and increasing our water storage capacity by building a new reservoir. That makes perfect sense. The water taps make sense. It's not putting a charge on the existing residents. The water tap fees have varied through the years depending on who's been sitting up here making decisions. And in some years, it's been very good to developers to help Woodland Park to grow. It's time that we have a water taps that take some of the burden off of the existing homeowners and developers, both commercial and residential, pay more for the tap fees and come more into line. And that there will help with keeping the enterprise healthy. Dove, I know, I don't want to tax your voice, is a new standard that's being imposed upon us by federal government to improve our water standards, drinking water, potable water. And then improving our meters, now we have to manually read the water meters, and that takes a lot of time. And it's about a thousand residents, so by upgrading the water meters to automatic readers, we won't have to physically look at every meter every month for the water bill. I'm not one that likes to spend money, but when it is for the interest of the community and the people, I say that this is a good proposal right here. And I, for one, would support it for those reasons, for the future of our families, kids, and community. That's what I have to say about it. And I would like feedback from anybody who wants to talk about it. Obviously, it's a very sensitive issue and a very, very important issue. Water is not cheap, and it's not getting any cheaper. And I think Kip is fighting for every bit of water that we can get, and so I'm for this.
A question for both of you. During the advisory committee discussions, were there any developers there or anyone who had a concern about the increase in the tap fees?
I know, so are you, but no. Uh, and that's why we have open discussions. Keep it up above the table in the day, in the light of day. And that's why I'm talking the way I'm talking, honestly and openly to people at home and the people who have given their time to come here. And it's worth an explanation. If Kip's voice was better, he'd be, he'd be talking the same thing. So that's why I feel the way I feel.
Questions or comments from other council members?
I I spent quite a bit of time today with Kip on exactly this, because of my usual concerns about budgets and fees and stuff. And he, as usual, he gave an excellent presentation and an excellent explanation for me, so I.
Is that why he lost his voice?
No, I helped in that regard yesterday.
I had another question. Maybe David can explain. What are the prospects for the new reservoir at this point?
They're good. Um, we're literally trying to set up a meeting next week to proceed with, um, basically the, I would say, the first portion of the the deal, if you will. We have appraisal of the property, so we have a value to shoot for, and what their wishes were and what we may be to be able to provide for them.
Um, any other comments or questions before we open it up for public comment? Is there anyone from the audience tonight that would like to comment on this proposal, this resolution? Um, if not, then I will entertain the motion to approve Resolution number eight fifteen.
I make motion that we approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, and thanks for bearing with me.
Okay, now my favorite part, public comment on items not on the agenda. Mr. Good, I see you took your name off. Mr. Carlson's gonna make comments later in the agenda. Is there anyone else that has comments under public comment? If not, then we will go on to reports, and in the mayor's report, uh, we have a couple of events. Uh, Tuesday, March twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen, from five thirty to seven, Chamber Business After Hours at Keller Williams Client Choice Realty, Realty. And then on April sixth, from eleven thirty to one o'clock, I almost said thirteen hundred, Chamber Luncheon Learn Stronger Employees at the Youth Past Cultural Center, meaning it will be at the Youth Past Cultural Center. And if you would like to attend that, RSVP to Scott Lees at seven one nine six eight seven nine eight eight five. That's all I have. We'll go to council reports, and Val, I understand you've got audiovisual.
I've got a couple of things. I'm gonna lead off with one thing, and then we can go to the audiovisual. Once again, this year, we're gonna have a National Night Out, and I, like most of the families, hopefully all the families in Woodland Park are really highly supportive of our public servants and the PD, and I would like to make the first donation, or the first one from our household anyway, for the chief to put in the National Night Out Fund. I I hi, I I hope the whole community comes out and supports that, and and it's a wonderful event. You get to meet everybody, you get to jump in the trucks and things like that. And the PD and the fire, the folks, the ambulance, it's it's a great night out. I don't know exactly when it is. I think they're in planning stages at this point.
First Thursday in August, will be August first.
Okay, thank you.
It's our first Tuesday in August.
Thank you, chief.
And thank you.
Secondly, I have, it's it's posted up there. The next two months, I'm gonna be involved in this. I'm a rock enrolled singer, I'm an R and B singer, but I'm also for the next two months, an opera singer. And the reason I bring this up is the Mikado is put on by Opera Theater of the Rockies. We're running about three months later than we usually do, and the reason I bring it up for Woodland Park purposes is this is a, this organization supports schools outreach. And and so some of the music teachers may not be aware that this has been delayed a few months. Please see me, please see these people to, it's a wonderful outreach for kids, adults, of course, all of us who like opera go, go to it anyway. And that's why I have this up there. This is what I'll be doing with constant rehearsals every day for two months. But the nice thing is they have outreach programs for schools, including up here, and they have in the past, and I'm hopeful that with our new, we had a situation recently with music in the high school, and they've resolved that, and I'm hopeful. with, uh, music in the high school and, uh, they've resolved that and I, I'm hopeful we'll get more exposure to the arts somehow, this being my chance to pump it up. Thank you.
Thanks, Val. Ken?
Just, uh, emphasize the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee's effort in promoting again, which coming up, the 15th Annual Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Cleanup Day, Spring Cleanup, May 20th, and encourage everybody to get involved. It's been a good event every year. A little bit different this year, we are including and, and starting off, uh, I'll call it a partnership with focus on the forest, also be involved in cleaning up some of the surrounding areas, because apparently a lot of the campsites in some of those areas are, uh, being abused also, and so they need some cleanup. So, and for whatever reason you're not involved or don't wanna be involved in the city, but you hike all the time, we'll be doing both. And there is a, a free cookout at noon outside the cultural center. If you have questions or wanna volunteer or know more about it, call planning department 687-5209. That's all I know.
Paul?
No.
Mayor's report, um, because the city attorney is not here. How are you?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We've got a couple this evening. Mike, why don't we start with you this evening and then we'll let Jane give us a special projects update, and I have a couple of things to mention as well.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, uh, and council. Uh, the city manager, city manager and I are very pleased to report that Standard and Poor's, uh, credit rating, long-term debt agency, uh, debt, long-term debt rating agency has affirmed our ratings on our debt and also issued a stable outlook for those ratings. So, Standard and Poor's is one of the largest and well-known credit rating agencies and surveillance calls, like the one we just had a couple of weeks ago, are typical. Sometimes they even visit in person, but this was a conference call. City manager and I, uh, talked with the credit analyst two weeks ago, and they issued their ratings report last week affirming those ratings and also issuing the staple outlook. They asked us numerous questions about city financial policies, budgeting practices, city management, and also, uh, debt and, uh, city finances. They based their assessments and ratings on the following factors of the city, for the city. Very strong economy, adequate management, strong budgetary performance in 2015 with operating surpluses in the general fund and across all governmental funds, very strong liquidity, adequate debt position, and a strong institutional framework score. That's typically how their, uh, rating system works, that those are all the different things that they assess and they assign points to each of those and, uh, come up with their rating. So the two analysts that we spoke with then met with a committee and then they review the analyst findings and then do what they do with the, each municipality's ratings. So the current long-term debt ratings that we have, one is on our 1998 bonds, uh, they were $2.58 million for drainage. And, uh, those actually matured this year in 2017. Uh, that rating is a double A minus. Um, we also have 2015 COPs, an A plus from Standard and Poor's on that one. And that is, the COPs were issued for Memorial Park and also refinancing, uh, prior COPs. That was a $3.455 million issue, and that one is matures in 2034. And then also an A plus on our 2015 general bonds, which were issued for the Aquatic Center, and that was $9.86 million and matures in 2035. So, you know, again, it was, it was excellent news to hear that. They took a, they talked to, uh, city manager and I, uh, asked extensive questions and, uh, you know, we were able to convey that cities in great financial state, they saw that. They also had access to our budget, to our comprehensive annual financial report, and, um, they were, they were able to affirm the ratings with a stable outlook, so. Any questions? Great news.
Yeah, no questions, just kudos primarily, but were you, um, anticipating a Standard and Poor assessment, or did they just show up on your doorstep?
They, they sent an email, like, basically, uh, on our email doorstep. Uh, we got an email, we'd like to talk to you in the coming days and, and, uh, we scheduled the call right away and had a great conversation with them.
It's not unusual to get that audit, if you will, to get that, that kind of a question period with me and with the finance director. Uh, we were concerned about the outcome, uh, but we were thrilled to hear that they have as much confidence in our budget practices as we do.
That's good news. Um, again, thank you to, to the entire city staff, uh, but especially to you, David, my thanks. And Mike, uh, welcome to Woodland Park.
Thank you.
High bar to, uh, to set for you. Any other comments for the, for the team?
I would just say it's great to hear that in lieu of all the press and some of the things that have gone on the last, uh, quite a few months about all the projects and things. It's great to kinda cap it off with that good news. Thank you.
That's all right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Jane? Could you give us a quick update on what's happening in your world?
Mayor Protem, council, Jane Mannan. A couple of things going on, starting with Main Street. Um, we had our visioning meetings, uh, last week. I know a couple of you were able to attend. Thank you for attending those. Uh, we had about a hundred participants, uh, we received about 200 surveys. And so our consultant is putting that information together and we anticipate that that vision work will be presented to the Main Street Board for their adoption in April, and then we will present that information to council in May. Uh, the end result being a vision statement that will kind of help guide a lot of the work that Main Street plans throughout the downtown area in the main, within the Main Street boundaries. Um, we do have a streets workshop, uh, through Colorado, uh, the Department of Local Affairs on May, March 22nd. Um, Main Street has also made application, their mini grant application, um, for work on the, uh, northern Antler Arch, uh, in, in Antler Alley. Um, so hopefully there, we'll see some more work going on on that this summer. We had the topping out ceremony at the Aquatic Center, which was great, well-attended, lots of folks doing tours, so that was very exciting. Glad to see all that moving forward. Um, the other thing that we've been working on is the Broncos have announced a 7K run in Woodland Park. I believe council's got some preliminary information on that. Um, been working a lot with the Broncos organization, which has just been a real treat. They are anticipating, this is on May 6th, uh, anticipating about a thousand runners. Um, we need lots of volunteers. And then we'll also be working on some ideas for businesses, on things that they can do to get some of those folks who are here in town for that day into their businesses. So we're proceeding with that. There's a lot of information on the Denver Broncos website. Um, I also have, there are flyers in the back, there's posters, please get those out, we wanna get those put up. You can do all your registration, you can sign up to be a volunteer, everything online. I do have kind of a hand-drawn map that I've done. I'm waiting for a final version, but if anybody wants to take a look at the map after the meeting, I'm more than, well, more than willing to share that with you. It's not really newspaper-ready just yet, but Kelly's gonna help me with the map next week.
Uh, Jane, how did we get selected for that?
Well, they, the Broncos apparently always do this run in Denver, and they decided that they wanted to branch out and do something a little bit more for their fans. Um, one of the connections that they made was with El Pomar. So the Broncos Foundation is working through El Pomar, and El Pomar said, well, hey, there's this great little town right up the pass. So that's a, been a, that's a great connection. They're do, also doing another race in Fort Collins. So it's a, if you wanna do all three races, you can do that as well.
I'll, I'll volunteer to help with that water.
Yeah, very exciting step. We'll have more updates and, and stay tuned. We're trying to get the word out, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Thanks.
I've got three quick things to add, and Mayor Protem, I apologize, the mayor slash coach Levy asked me to ask you to announce that there would be a home baseball game Saturday morning, 10 o'clock, Panther Field against Cheyenne Mountain. So in case he's listening, I've met my obligation. Uh, secondly, just a reminder to our council and to our citizens, high fire danger. It is drier in this March than we've seen in a long, long time. It's very scary. There's, uh, small fires that are popping up all over the place, so please be extremely fire-wise as you go about your daily activities. And lastly, uh, the, uh, to continue in the vein of the Aquatic Center, uh, you know, we've been working on gaining enough funds to make a decision on the slide, and I'm happy to announce tonight that I've directed the general contractor to order all the parts and pieces associated with the slide. Uh, the total cost of the slide was about $240,000. A lot of people don't understand that that's more than just the fiberglass tubes. That's the pumps, it's the piping, it's the concrete piers, it's the steel structures that hold the slide up, it's the spiral staircase and the steel landing. Uh, so all of that combined costs $240,000. And to date, we've committed about $189,000 towards that effort. That's sufficient funding for me to direct the general contractor to order all the parts. Worst-case scenario is if we aren't successful in getting the additional money, we'll have all the pieces so that when we do, we can put it all together. I believe this community, and with the good management of this construction contract, we will be successful in closing that gap. And of course, my goal all along has been to have that slide open the day that we open in early October. So I think it's very exciting, and I know that Mr. Carlson wanted to speak to this effort as well, and then we'll be happy to accept any questions that you have on anything.
Mr. Carlson?
Bob Carlson, 1155 Windpower Lane, Woodland Park. I have one question for Jane. Can we walk instead of running?
Yes, you can, yes.
I'll be there. Uh, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank David, uh, for his management of this and the citizens who have actually contributed a lot of money. We've had quite an outpouring of support over the last couple of weeks. I know it's been a short timeframe to have to make decisions, but I do really thank everyone on behalf of the Woodland Aquatic Project Board of Directors for your con, uh, your donations for this project. That's all I have.
Ma'am, I'm done unless there are questions for me or staff.
I just wanted to say one thing. I highly recommend that you do not let the pieces to a slide sit unerected. That ordering this while the contractor is on this job site doing this work, that this slide is installed.
That's certainly our go. Absolutely.
Otherwise, you're gonna find a couple of pieces missing or a couple of extra pieces left over that you don't want left over.
That's not our desire at all.
Okay.
That's all I got, Bishop.
Well, in closing, um, I am not going to read the written correspondence because we have several really gracious, uh, letters of thanks to the Community Investment Fund, but I will identify who those, uh, letters are from. The Community Cover, Junior Achievement, Mountaintop Cycling Club, Woodland Park Senior Citizens Club, Teller County Vida Community Church, Teller Senior Coalition, Help the Needy Organization and Choices. Uh, these are, uh, some very nice letters, uh, acknowledging, um, our, the Community Investment Fund contributions from this year, and they'll be available to read in the clerk's office if anyone would like to do that. Are there any other comments from the audience? Yes, sir, please. Hi, Steve.
I'm, uh, Steve Jeroslow, currently living at 610 Sun Valley Drive here in Woodland Park. I wanna comment, Mr. Mayor, you look particularly fetching tonight. I am glad you decided to shave off your beard, you look great.
It's springtime.
Uh, some of you may know, and I guess most of you may know, that I'm going to be moving, uh, with great regrets. My wife decided she wanted to be near my oldest daughter and five of my grandkids, and, uh, so we're moving. I never thought I'd leave Woodland Park, as you may recall, I got here about eight and a half years ago, and as I said repeatedly at that time, I thought I'd already died and gone to heaven. Uh, to be able to wake up every morning and look out and see Pike's Peak is just magnificent. Uh, there's no parallel for it. I, I would venture to say that maybe one tenth of 1% of the entire American population has the natural beauty that we do here in Woodland Park, so it's very special. But I also learned after that, after getting engaged in the community, uh, quite a bit, uh, that as much of a treasure as Pike's Peak is to our region, the people of Woodland Park are the real treasures of Woodland Park. And I've had the distinct pleasure of working with so many outstanding volunteers, also working with, uh, members, current and former members of the mayor and council, the city staff, and of course, David Butterey. And it has been a joy to, to live here for eight and a half or more years. Uh, I have lived in many, many parts of the country. I was in the military, we moved a lot, and I even moved a lot of private industry, but I have never experienced the kind of civic spirit and volunteerism that we have in this great mountain community of ours. So I, I wanted to thank the people of Woodland Park for being, uh, as great as they are and supporting their community, the mayor and council for, uh, both current and former members for tremendous foresight, David Butterey and his simply outstanding staff, uh, because you folks make Woodland Park what it is, and you have enabled us to maintain and even improve the quality of life for all of our citizens. So, thank you for the privilege and the pleasure, I appreciate it.
Steve, our thanks to you, um, probably more so than, than what you, you've shared with us, um, your support of the council, your support of the community, the tremendous efforts you put into the aquatic project, and, and personally, for me, your, your council, I, I cherish that and I will miss it when you're gone, so.
Thank you. It's very kind of you to say that. Thank you.
Thank you for serving.
Anyone else? All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Wow, I'm gonna miss somebody, I can understand when they talk-